With the time being six o'clock PM on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order. As a reminder, there were changes issued by Governor Baker that modified the open meeting law requirements given the COVID-19 pandemic and certain COVID-19 measures that were adopted during the state of emergency have been extended, including those that allow public bodies to conduct meetings in a virtual forum as long as the public has access to the meeting. This meeting's been posted on the district website with a Zoom link, allowing the public to join. As another reminder, this meeting is being recorded both audio and video and will be posted on the district website. Just also want to take this opportunity to let folks know that it is our intention to return to in-person school committee meetings. We'll probably be doing that for our next meeting. When this occurs, those who wish to join the meeting should plan to come to the Michael McCarrick Conference Room and that's located in the district admin office. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the August 24th minutes.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the minutes from August 24th, 2021. Why would you pull the committee?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Member Atomopoulos? I see he's on mute. Maybe he hasn't been able to connect yet?
He was in, he just looked like went private for a minute.
Okay. Well, we can continue on Chair Siddiqui.
Yes. This motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September 14th, 2021 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve these minutes. Why would you pull the committee, please?
Member Naparada?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yeah.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Dr. Gogan.
Good evening. I will begin with a personnel update. If for some reason my internet goes out, I'm going to go to my phone just as a backup plan. I'm going to start with a personal update. We've hired some new people. I'm pleased to introduce John Haley as our new EL teacher at Bartlett High School, Sherry LaBrecque as our new grade four teacher at Park Avenue School, Lauren Maha as an ABA at Webster Middle School, Michaela Metcalf as a sped teacher at Park Avenue School, and Teresa LeBlonte as our float sub over at Bartlett High School. She happens to be a retired teacher of the Webster Public Schools. We have had some internal moves since I've last seen you. Ms. Suzanne Stitch has moved over to the academic interventionist position over at Webster Middle School. Deborah Castellani is moved to a special education teacher position over at Park Avenue School. Kelly O'Brien has been moved to an academic interventionist position over at Bartlett High School. And Deborah Zablaki will remain an academic interventionist but has been, will be focusing on coaching peers as the gleam lead teacher. We have received some, received some resignations. Christopher Houston from Bartlett High School has resigned. He was a sped teacher. Lynne Benoit, a paraprofessional, has resigned. I do want to let you know that we have been posting for re-engagement specialists for Bartlett High School. That position was designed specifically to assist with re-engaging high school students and taking care of some of the dropouts that we experienced last year. We have not been able to find someone for a full-time position, but we are contracting out with Ms. Mary Baker to do a needs assessment at Bartlett High School and she will give us that data and we're hoping that we can find someone to pick up that position because we believe it's an important position. I'd also like to let you know that we have been informed that John Preisler, our groundskeeper over at the district office, will be retiring on October 1st. We want to thank him publicly for his years of service and his hard work and we wish him the best in his retirement years. I also would like to let you know that with being back in school and having kids having to quarantine and us not doing synchronous learning, we are posting for some part-time tutors, academic tutors, to specifically ensure that there's an ongoing connection with any student that has to possibly stay home for a quarantine. We are seeing COVID cases in families and when there are multiple people in a household, quarantines last longer than 10 days or potentially could. So we are posting for that and that will be funded through our Title I funds. On our, the next agenda, I will be requesting your permission to access Esser Funds to increase our L teachers. We're going to hear a little bit more amount about our L programming tonight from Dr. Mackay. So that concludes my personnel update. I'll take any questions before I move on if there are any. Hearing none, I'll proceed. I know we're in our fifth week of school and I missed, I missed the last school committee meeting. I just want to say that it's been a very busy and successful start of the school year. We had some bumps and bruises with some scheduling, but we're working all of that out and we have revised our drop-off procedures over at Park Avenue School. And you know, it's certainly wonderful to see the buildings filled and seeing our kids in action. And I guess one of the things that we've been saying is the honeymoon's over. We're back in action and it kind of feels normal. So a lot is going on. We'd like to let you know on our enrollment update that our central office registration has been extremely busy. They enrolled 256 new students this year. The breakdown is in your school committee packets and we are seeing that our enrollment is up from last year. As of 9/24, we have 1,708 students, 407 at Bartlett High School, 589 at Webster Middle School, and 712 over at Park Ave. In comparison to last year around this time where we had 1,664 students. This year, we have had some new school choice applicants. The breakdown is, is given to you in your packet. We have seen an increase of school choice students over at Bartlett High School. And as you know, our school choice cutoff date is quickly coming up upon us. I've attended both the CMC and SWECC meetings as a board member. The quarter three and four reports are in your packet for review. In other updates, you will hear more about this with Mrs. Perangeli, but on August 24th, the MSBA approved the Bartlett High School project to move into the schematic design phase. That schematic design will be submitted to the MSBA in January with a prospective February MSBA meeting date. So between now and January, we will be very, very busy working with our OPM and designers. More to come in Mrs. Perangeli's report. I'm pretty excited that we have been tapped on the shoulder by MSBA to be part of their story of a building project. We were specifically invited to highlight that we are a renovation project and this is a statewide initiative where we will be working with the MSBA to put together how we are really trying to reduce our carbon waste and reuse our existing building. We are a very unique building, so it's pretty remarkable that they tapped us on the shoulder to partake in this. We have a planning session coming up and more to come and we hope to be highlighted, I think sometime in November and December publicly. So it's a pretty big deal. Any questions so far? I'll keep going. We've been busy with our literacy reset and getting our, our programs and our coaches ready. We did the RFP process and we have hired Hill literacy consultants. We will be having a literacy coach at each of our buildings two days a week, one at Park Ave, one at Webster Middle School and one at Bartlett High School to assist with our literacy needs assessment and literacy reset. These coaches are specifically trained in literacy and dealing with different developmental levels. They will be working closely with our teachers, our ILT and our principals on using our research-based materials, but also using data to inform instruction. Our gleam grant that we received from the Department of Education for the Webster Middle School and Bartlett High School, we've been working with Hill. They are the DESI-approved consultants. So it's coincidental that we're using them for both the coaching and for the literacy gleam grant. They will be providing support, 150 hours at each of the schools in conjunction with their coaching contract with us. They will also be working on a district-wide needs assessment and helping us walk through the action steps of a plan to ensure that students' literacy skills are built and we are providing the proper interventions for students who need assistance. I, and I know some of this news is old because I had to miss the last meeting, but I'm just going to let you know that we, Mrs. Perangeli and myself, attended the brunch for our town account manager, Doug Williston, and we welcomed in our new interim town manager, Greg Belukas, Belukanis, and we are pleased to be working with him. With regards to community partnerships, we were given some old documents that were found in a closet over at Bartlett High School, yearbooks from 1915 to 1933, and we wanted to make sure that those were protected and saved for the history of Webster. And Curtis Cleaves from the Webster Dudley Historical Society was very pleased that we called him and he came over and collected those to put in the Webster History Collection. We are working with the Webster Town Librarian, Mrs. Claybart, on starting a reading club for the Webster Middle School. The Webster Library received a grant and they will be bringing in author Christina Baker Klein to Webster. So we'll be offering the book Orphan Train Girl for students for an after-school program sometime in the fall and winter. And our hope is that the author herself would be doing some hands-on sessions with our students and also offering an opportunity for the community to come and meet and greet her as well. I would like to, am I going too fast? Okay. I'd like to let you know that we've been working closely with the SSOS team, AKA the SAOS team from DESI, with our principals and Dr. Mackay and Mrs. Chaplain on really fine-tuning our school improvement plans and aligning them to sort of the very simplistic goals that are outlined in DESI's roadmap for success. We have found that the process of going through these school improvement plans and kind of condensing them has been very positive and effective. So in a meeting or two to come, you will be seeing some new school improvement plans from the schools. I'd also like to let you know that we have met our WE, scheduled our WEA monthly team meetings and those seem to be going very well. And you're going to hear a lot about Esser Funds in the future. We, the Esser Three Funds, 4.6 million, we have sent out surveys to our families and to our staff to see, to collect feedback on the use of those funds. And we've been working diligently to use those funds to compensate for learning loss and moving forward after a year and a half of COVID and hybrid learning. Pleased to let you know that the first CPAC meeting happened last night at the district offices and Mrs. Baker did the right-to-know information for families and Mrs. Barris was there in attendance and we did have some new families join us and so that's exciting. Our family liaison, Margaret Nieves, Margarita Nieves, has also sent out a survey to parents to collect feedback on what they'd like to see for parent outreach throughout the year. And so we'll be sharing that feedback from those two surveys at a future meeting. I would like to ask Dr. Mackay to just give a brief update on the work that's been done with our ELL curriculum and programming.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. So as a result of the audit that we had last year that we've spoken about earlier this year, one of the pieces that we needed to improve was to have a dedicated English language development curriculum to support the attainment of English language proficiency for our L students. And so we, at the end of the year last year, had purchased the curriculum through a company called Ballot and Tie. We purchased a program called Frames for Learning for All Levels. Frames for Learning provides boxes of sentence frames, which is one of the, you know, great instructional strategies for STI, for Sheltered English Emergent. And so there's, there's helping students, you know, develop conversation, finish sentences. That's one piece of it. At the elementary school, we have two programs, a very early, basic newcomer program called Hands on English, as well as Carousel of Ideas. I'm pleased to let you know that the elementary teachers have begun using these, these programs and are very excited to share with, with us, with families and with students the success there. They're very excited about their use and really feel like this will help develop the language to of the, of the L students. At middle school, the program is called Champions and the same at the high school. Champions has a more digital component where the elementary school had more hands-on books, but we did order some, using some Esser Funds. We did order some hardcover journals for writing for the, for the students in the L classes, the ESL classes. We believe that it's really important to, to provide and dedicate this specific curriculum. As you know, L teachers are not just re-teachers of ELA content or math content or science or social studies content, but they are developers of English language. And so we've worked really hard to legitimize that role and having our own dedicated curriculum to develop language is a piece that we feel will really benefit the language attainment of our students. Our numbers are higher this year. We also have been analyzing data and understand that not as many students have tested out of ELL. That's called FEL, Former English Learner, used to be called FLEP. Some students didn't take access for some reason during COVID and, and that was out of our control. But without the access score from 2021, they're not able to FEL. Most of our students, I will say that most of our students did take the access. We had a very, very high percentage of participation and access in comparison to some other state districts. We've also had a huge influx. Dr. Gogan talked about this number of students that we've enrolled. We've had a huge influx of students from many different places. And so the L teachers have been working very hard to piece together the information from last year. And in, in many cases, it's scant. In many cases, it's really playing investigator to say, where were they? Did they have an access test? Where do we place these new students? How do we get that information? So that initial identification and placement process has been more challenging this year given the events of last year. So our numbers are higher for active Ls that get direct service as well as for students to be monitored. Those are opt-outs and FELs. But we are very excited about starting a new year face-to-face with our students, seeing their faces and having them participate in oral language development, which was so much harder behind the screen. And so having this face-to-face time should, should help us. Lastly, I'd like to say that we're planning our first LPAC meeting for mid-October. So information will be going out to our families about LPAC.
Thank you, Dr. Mackay. I will have a couple more things before I conclude my report. I don't know if many of you remember that we had worked with MAFRA a couple of years ago and we produced a, a video called "The Safe Play Starts Here", in conjunction with MAFRA and Boston Children's Hospital. We produced that video over at Park Avenue School. Well, it was submitted to the Boston College Center for Corporate Citizenship by MAFRA and we just were informed that we were a finalist and won the, one of the finalist awards. So I just want to give a shout out to our students and staff who were highlighted in, in that and thank MAFRA again for their partnership. I also want to let you know that we have some upcoming flu shots scheduled for our staff, our employees annually. Mrs. Marazo schedules that, so I want to thank her for that. That's coming up on August 5th, 6th and 7th for our employees. We also are, have recently signed a memorandum of understanding again with UINC to get them back into our school to provide an additional layer of counseling for families. And I'm very pleased to let you know that we've been working with our consultant, Abigail Callahan, our Innovative Pathways Consultant, and our first business advisory group meeting for, you know, developing our innovation pathways and business partnerships is scheduled for October 6th. We have some, we definitely have some interest in our community, Gentex, IPG, Photonics, OpenSky Community Services, UMass Memorial, Swistern, Hanky Sass and Wolf, MAFRA and Blackstone Valley Educational Foundation, foundations will be in attendance in our first meeting, which is a lot of people for a first meeting. So that's a good sign. And then finally, I just want to let you know that our adult education program has delayed their start of servicing students. They're working on more, more marketing and one of the new marketing tactics that DESI has implemented for the adult education program is to rebrand the adult manufacturing IET program that we have been doing over at Bay Path. Its new name is Mass Step. We had planned an initial rollout for this week actually on Monday, but due to low enrollment and interest in participating, we have postponed that. So there will be more information coming about their programming in future meetings. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, thank you for your very thorough report. Very excited about the Innovation Pathways meeting that's coming up. So looking forward to more info about that. The next item on the agenda is Business Manager Report. Good evening, Mrs. Perangeli.
Good evening, thank you. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. As Dr. Gogan stated, the school building committee met on September 16th. We were approved in August to enter into the next phase of our project. Really what this means is that we are getting into more detail through the schematic design phase and really narrowing down on the finer details and costs of the building. We met with the architects. They had a consultant come in who shared a presentation about HVAC systems and talked through some of the pros and cons of different systems during that meeting. And what we're going to be doing is forming smaller subgroups of that meeting to go into a little more detail with our maintenance and non-hand staff to talk about the operations and costs because all of these additional bigger items, bigger ticket items is going to help them define the cost of the project, which we will need in January as we're bringing information out to our community for support. So we're working through that process and we're really excited about it. The architects also shared at that building, like Dr. Gogan said, about the story of a building. They're very excited about that. It is a big deal and our OPM and architect are looking forward to that. It's really a way to feature our project and our building and it just shows that the MSBA is really supporting and taking a real interest in the Webster project. So that's a good thing for our community. That's what we want to see. So we're excited about that. I did put in the packet for you guys tonight. I dropped it in late, I apologize for that. But the, the presentations that were shared for Building Committee, I thought you might want to look at on your own time. So I put them in there for you to review if you're interested. Are there any questions about Building Committee? No, okay. Next up, we have the FY21 Food Service Closeout. Happy to say that we closed out our budget and we are in good shape. There were concerns early on in the year when we were looking at the food service costs with all of our home meals that we were providing at that time and all the paper goods. We did well and thanks to some additional supports from our state and federal dollars, we used some SR1 money and then we had received some state funding. That money was used to purchase the majority of our paper goods supplies because as you know, we were pre-packaging every meal that went out. Our food service staff worked really hard and it took a lot of time and effort to get those meals for our families, but they did it and we managed. We, we came out on a positive side of things. So our current ending balance was $184,779.30. We were up from the beginning of the school year. We also just received another $44,012, to be exact, from the state in additional funding for emergency COVID costs. They based that number on the amount of meals that were sold from April through January of last year. We just received that. So that's to help with offsetting any operating costs that we might see because of COVID. We are still struggling a little bit on the food service side and actually things are worse this year than they were last year as far as supplies and receiving orders and the supply chains across the state and the nation are, have really taken a hit due to COVID. So we actually this week received our first government meal, which is a big deal when I say that because we use a lot of our government products, which help offset our costs. If we're not purchasing our government commodities, which we're getting at cost, we're paying, you know, sometimes twice as much for the product through our regular vendors, if we can get them at all. They're having issues with supply. They're having issues with deliveries. So it's been happening all over the state. So we're excited to see some of that coming back and starting to trickle in. We're also having troubles getting paper supplies. Things like we were struggling getting plastic forks and knives for our students. So to help with that, we went old school and we got rail silverware in case there's an issue where we can't get the product. We used to get individuals, we started getting packets and then at one point, we were having a hard time getting anything. So we have a backup plan if needed. We, we just start going back to the basics and taking care of what we need to do. But all of these things have an impact on our budget, you know? And we have really been able to maintain that throughout the year with some of the help of good management on Ms. Nylund's behalf and some support from our state and federal governments. So are there any questions about the budget for FY21 for food service? No, okay. Next item on the agenda is the FY21 LEA Budget Closeout. In your packet, there is a copy of the FY21 budget. It is complete. I will be starting to work on this at the end-of-year report. We will be returning $522,403.13 back to the town of Webster. I know they're really excited about that, getting the additional dollars, which will go back to free cash and it'll help them out in the future. But, you know, we ended up the year in good shape and we were, you know, fortunate to be able to use our federal money that we received in Esther funding to help also offset some of those costs. Are there any questions with that? No, hearing none. I'll continue on just under other updates. The last thing I wanted to let you know about is again, just technology. The last thing I wanted to let you know about is again, just technology. I just wanted to follow up on a little bit of our last meeting and we talked about security over the past couple days. We've started having some issues with our phone systems late yesterday afternoon. And what happened was that there was a security attack, not on our equipment or our vendor, but where the vendor gets their internet bandwidth from, their voice over IP bandwidth from. It was a nationwide attack. It's called a DDoS attack, which means Distributed Denial of Service Attack. What that means is they're not really looking for ransom for that. They're just kind of trying to stop your service. It's almost like, what kind of trouble can we get into? So these hackers go out and they just try and disrupt service. And it's interrupted nationwide. Some of your big vendors, there was a the company was bandwidth.com. There was an article about it in the newspaper about the attack. It's happening more frequently. It's happening not not just here in Massachusetts. It's happening in many countries all over the place. Another side effect from COVID is that it's forced technology in the use and we're using it a lot more. So I just think that our services are back online. Currently, they were in and out today. They are back. The company is positive. They're hopeful that they caught this early and that they nipped it into the nipped it in the bud. But it's just something that we all need to be mindful of and just take extra time when we're on the internet, when we're looking at our emails, when we're checking things, that we're just looking at those email addresses. We're not clicking on links and we're just all doing our due diligence to make sure that we're doing the best we can to operate in a safe manner. Because, you know, there's there's people out there unfortunately that are just looking to cause havoc and they are. And it's important for us to make sure we keep that line of communication over and operate as safely as possible. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Well, hearing none. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. That's the Principal's Report. Joining us this evening is Mrs. Peterson from Webster Middle School. Good evening. Ms. Peterson, you're muted, so.
Sorry, I've been a while since I've been on Zoom. It's nice to.
Well, that's a good thing.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. A couple of updates and some upcoming events to take note of. Last week, we had our annual open house. So it was in person. It was nice to see many parents coming into the building. We had a schedule that seemed to go really well this year. I got some good feedback from both parents and staff. That fifth and seventh grade did a presentation and sixth and eighth grade did tie up some presentations and had some time in the classrooms as well for walking around and checking things out. So that went really well. We are starting our school council. Our first meeting will be the second Wednesday in October. So we have a full school council with staff and parents, a community member. And I put out to the eighth graders this morning requesting a student representative and I've already gotten several students interested, so we will be choosing one candidate to represent the student population. We something new in our schedule this year is an RTI block, a response to intervention. So every grade has a 30-minute block every day, which we for the children are calling enrichment. And so what that entails is some interventions for students, very targeted interventions based on data. Currently, the data we're using are our beginning of the year iReady scores, MCAS data and current and last year grades. As we move forward in the year, we'll be looking at weekly data from classrooms and teachers. So we will be starting that on Monday officially. The teachers have been working hard organizing groups and placing students where they need the most assistance. Our extracurricular activities are underway. We are excited to have Drama Club back this year. Art Club is back. Student Council has started with elections last week. National Junior Honor Society. There, the staff are going through applications right now to finalize NJHS candidates. We have a staff volunteer who has started an LGBTQ and Ally Club at the middle school. So that's new. And as Dr. Gogan said, the library, the public library will be assisting us with a reading club. So we are always looking for more extracurricular activities as middle school is a pivotal time where adolescents are trying to find what they like and join as many clubs as they can. So we welcome volunteers, parent volunteers. If you're interested in starting any kind of club, just reach out to me and we will work something out. It's a good way to get involved in the school. Unfortunately for parents, middle school kids don't want you in the building, but the extracurricular place is an area that they would love to have someone be there. So please reach out. We are actually going to be starting some monthly parent information sessions or gatherings. Haven't quite come up with a name yet, but so once a month, the counselors and administration will be presenting various topics. So look for that soon. Our first topic in October will be around bullying, being that October is anti-bullying month. And there's a lot of confusion around what bullying is and what bullying isn't. The term is used often and incorrectly, so we want to be educating people on on that. So that will be coming out in Class Dojo and One Call shortly with the date. Questions? Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Navarota.
Ms. Peterson, will the information about the clubs be put on Class Dojo for parents to be aware? Is it something that's only emailed to students? We do. We typically do morning announcements and put posters up around the building, but we can certainly post it on Dojo as well. That is, as you know, our mode of communication for parents. So that's a great idea. Thank you, Ms. Navarota. Thank you.
Well, Ms. Peterson, I was one of the parents that attended the open house last week with my fifth grader and it ran very smoothly. It was so nice. That was a great opportunity to spend some time in the building and really get to know some of the teachers. Great experience. She was really thrilled to be able to show me where she's learning and where her things are kept and all that kind of thing too. So for now, she still wants me in the building, but my middle school career is early still, so. Are there any other questions or comments from Ms. Peterson? Well, thank you very much for all that you do and for your update tonight. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative, Colin Manerick. Good evening, Colin. I didn't get to meet you the last time because I wasn't at the meeting. So it's very nice to meet you. Thanks for being here.
No problem. Thank you. So I'm just starting off with a update on sports real quick. So the boys soccer team has finally won a couple games. We are now two and six. Some good news to hear. The volleyball team has also won a couple games. They are also two and six. The golf team won their first match yesterday against David Proudy. They are now one and seven. The football team is sadly oh and three, as well as the boys and girls cross-country teams. And the girl soccer team is still sadly oh and eight. But sports have been looking way better for our school. A senior breakfast has happened, occurred last week, I believe, and went very smoothly. Everyone loved it. Had everyone had a great time. Also, acapella has started for the for the high school. It's a new club. They have about 20 kids. Everything's going well. Talked to a couple of my friends who are in it. They love it. They can't wait to get started. So that's looking very promising and good for our school. And also Barlet has completed iReady testing for English and math. Also, we held our open house on the 16th in person and that ran very smoothly. It's great for parents to be able to come back into school and just tour, get to know their kids' teachers. I know it's been a while, especially since my parents have seen my teachers and it's a great experience. Also, the freshman class has finally elected four class officers, which is great for them to get started and start that up. And this afternoon, sports pictures were taken. Sadly, couldn't be outside due to this weather that we had, but it was done in the auditorium today. And that is all I have for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments?
If I may, Chair Siddiqui, I wasn't at the last meeting and I'm not sure that Colin received a proper introduction. I just wanted to tell you a little bit about Colin as our new student rep. First, we're really pleased to have you. But he is the vice president of the class of his class and he is a member of the National Honor Society. And he plays soccer, basketball and tennis. And even during summer hours was interested in doing community service. And I want to give a shout out to Colin and his brother Ethan, who were very, very helpful this summer unpacking lots of reading material over at Park Ave and helping move large boxes with a smile on their face during the heat. So I I just wanted to welcome you, Colin, and give the committee a little background on you. We're pleased to have you join our team and we look forward to hearing from you and your student perspective throughout the year.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan, and thank you, Colin. Nice job. The next item on the agenda under Old Business is an update on COVID protocols. Dr. Gogan?
Thank you. I do want to let you know that our vaccination clinic that we had scheduled through the state, this is our second vaccination clinic, had come in September. Because they only had six people attend the vaccination clinic, they will not be coming back on October 6th for the second shot. DPH came down with some new guidance and we did not meet their threshold. So anyone who did receive those shots need to reach out to CBS or their doctors for their second round of shots. So that was a little bit of disappointing news, but it is our second free vaccination clinic that we have scheduled. The COVID dashboard numbers for this week are not complete because our nursing rooms and nurses are very, very busy. But the the rundown of COVID cases from the start of school or in your school committee notes. The first week, we had 20 students and two staff. The second week, we had eight students and one staff with positive COVID cases. And last week, it was 11 students and zero staff. I do want to let you know that Desi was late with setting up their system for school testing. They changed their mind on what system they were going to use, but we did send out permissions to families on September 9th. And our nurses will only be doing symptomatic testing at the schools at this time. And in order for students to be tested, parents have to fill out those permission slips. I'm pleased to let you know that although Ms. Jennifer Sullivan has taken a different position in a different community, she's still working with us on COVID cases and we're contracting through the town of Webster. And she will be supporting the new Board of Health Director, Camille Griffin, who starts pretty soon. And I would like to let you know that Desi has just announced that they have extended the mask mandate, which I'm sure that you have seen on the news until November 1st. And that is our COVID protocol updates.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan.
I understand part of that. I'm sorry, through the chair. I have a question. I'm just curious as to when we get to that point, say, November 1st, and they want this 80% vaccination rate in a school, how they calculate that when you have a school where students do not get vaccinated? And how do do they make adjustments? For this?
They have pushed out a policy, which I can also send to you on the the strategies and ways that schools have to prove that 80% are vaccinated. I will tell you that we are nowhere near that in any of our schools, even in the schools that have students 12 and over. And we're not near that with our staff. So the the process that Desi would like districts who want to go maskless for those that are vaccinated is put out in the policy that they just pushed out yesterday. I can certainly share that with the school committee in an email.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any other questions or comments from the committee?
Through the chair.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Hi, sorry, I couldn't unmute. I'm just curious as to how mask breaks happen and when they happen. I know we don't have the building principals here except for Ms. Peterson, but I didn't know if that was something that maybe Ms. Peterson could take or or Dr. Gogan. I'm just kind of curious as to how that's happening.
Ms. Peterson, do you want to speak about the Webster Middle School? And I can speak generally about the other schools.
So our teachers are all taking mass breaks outside as much as possible. We our math and English classes are 90 minutes long, so it lends nicely to be taking breaks in those longer classes. So the students and the teachers go outside and sometimes they take a walk around the building. Sometimes they'll go to the playground and do a quick game. The older kids kind of just go outside and talk and chat together and take a little mass break. There are some times when specifically in science and social studies classes where the classes are only 45 minutes, it doesn't lend itself nicely to break that up. So the guidelines do indicate that we are allowed to take mass breaks inside. So what is happening is the teachers are rotating. Every couple of students take their mask off for two to three minutes and then the next student with all windows open and air flowing. So that is what we are doing at the middle school.
Colin, would you like to tell us how they do it at the high school?
I'm sure. So mainly, our main mass break is during lunch. So we have about 30 minutes at lunch with without a mask and that that's good. Some classes, depending on like if it's a long block, like first period or in the middle of the day, generally a teacher will sometimes say like, oh, let's go for a walk outside and we can take our mask off outside. Or if the class is smaller, sometimes we'll open up all the windows, make sure we're all six feet apart and take like a couple minute mass break real quick. Just making sure we're all maintaining social distancing while doing that. But generally speaking, we normally go outside and take a walk, depending on the temperature, obviously, and how the weather conditions are. But it's pretty much it.
And I I know for the elementary school, after the two meetings ago, Mrs. Promley sent out reminders about mask breaks. And and I know that the elementary teachers do take their kids outside for mask breaks when they can or separate them in the classroom and that they are ensuring that there are mask breaks well before lunchtime, I think, at the elementary school.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that. Colin, it's always nice to have a student perspective on this as well. So there there are some comments that are coming in here in the chat. I don't know if there's a way that we can.
I'm sorry.
Send an email to folks.
I'm here.
About.
I do have a question. My son, he has severe asthma and allergies and he has a hard time breathing. But he says the only time they get mask break is lunch and recess. But I see a lot of the kids outside with masks on running around.
No.
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. But what I would recommend is that if we have specific cases that we want to talk about, just in an effort to respect your privacy, your son's privacy, these meetings are recorded and they're being posted on our website. So I would strongly encourage, whether it's a community member or a parent like yourself, that we deal with this not in such a public forum. More generalities, I think, makes a lot of sense. But when it comes to these real specific things, I would encourage people to not share that type of thing in this forum. Dr. Gogan, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, I was just going to answer the question about the 80%. Is it 80% per school or 80% by district? It's first of all, the recommendation from Desi is that if you reach 80%, you have to prove to Desi that you reach 80% and it's school by school. And it is certainly, whether or not a school or district avails themselves to this 80% vaccination off-ramp is a local decision. It's not a decision made by Desi. They have made the mandate and it's actually a district decision in consultation with your health officials. But it is a school-by-school calculation. To answer that question. And certainly, any issues like Mrs. Siddiqui said pertaining to individual students, we certainly want to address your needs, but certainly not in a public forum. My recommendation would be to either call my office or the principal directly to speak to the principal or myself.
Thanks, Dr. Gogan. While I don't set the rules for the individual buildings, I don't want to make it sound as though I'm not interested or open to hearing questions or concerns either. I just would prefer not to do it in this forum. So I would invite anybody that would like to speak with me or another member of the committee about these things. You can certainly reach out to us directly as well, while we don't have, you know, the details on the goings-on in the individual buildings. Happy to talk with you. The next item on the agenda, there's actually several items under New Business, but the first item there is the approval of a job description for groundskeeper. Dr. Gogan?
Yes, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Perangeli to speak about this.
Thank you. With the retirement of our groundskeeper, we updated the job description. There are some similarities to the old one. It was much smaller. We added indoor custodial cleaning to help out in the additional buildings throughout the district. The grounds person in the winter can sometimes get a little slow outside. If there's not a lot of snow, they're taking care of the grounds. They can help out inside. So we've incorporated that and expanded a little bit on the job description.
Thank you, Ms. Perangeli. It's always a good opportunity to make some revisions when we have the opportunity to post again. So glad we're taking advantage of that.
Absolutely.
Sorry about that. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the job description for groundskeeper as presented.
So moved. Back then.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval to increase the groundskeeper position from a .6 FTE to a full-time FTE 1.0. Does Ms. Perangeli again?
Sure.
Up to you, Dr. Gogan. You want me to take it?
Sure, it's a quick one.
All right. We are looking to increase from a .6 to a 1.0. We had tried to do this a couple of years ago in our budget process and we eliminated it. We need it now more than ever for the indoor help. What we are currently doing is during the day, if one of our custodians is out, we call in other custodians early. And then we're having a difficult time with the additional cleaning of the buildings. So the added time in this position, we'll be able to pull him to help with some coverage during the day. And if that coverage is not needed, we will use them to help with the Park Ave grounds. This will be funded out of S R 2. There is money in S R 2 for additional cleaning for custodial support.
Questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve an increase to the groundskeeper, from .6 FTE to a full 1.0 FTE.
So moved. Back then.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a memorandum of agreement with the Webster Educators Association.
Mrs. Siddiqui, we skipped over the approval for the job description for the COVID RN nurses.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
I think I made my list here before the agenda was updated. So the next item on the agenda, sorry, is the approval. I'm opening up my other file here. I'll be right there. The approval of the job description for the COVID RN slash LPM. Thank you.
We have put together a new job description for COVID nurses for the Park Avenue School and Webster Middle School. These positions are well-needed. The job description is in front of you. These nurses, if we can get them, would help our nurses with the high influx of students coming through their office, not just for COVID, but for typical childhood issues. We have seen in the first couple of weeks of school that our nurses' offices are packed. Our nurses are not able to do some of the basic things that they could have done and they're very stretched. So with the S R funds, which is the next thing on the approval, is we'd like to hire two additional COVID nurses. So the first is the job description, which is pretty detailed, a nursing duties that would be at Park Avenue School and Webster Middle School.
Good afternoon, Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee about this new job description? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved. Back then.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. Glad to get some assistance to the nurses. I know they're very, very busy. The next item on the agenda is approval of the position of the COVID RN slash LPM.
This again would be two positions, one for Park Avenue and one for Webster Middle School. In your packet, I shared a letter that we received from the Massachusetts Nursing Association statewide, asking school committees to support the nurses during this time. These positions are for this year only and they will be funded through S R 3, which is the use of the money. And so we are requesting permission to do that.
Thank you, Dr. Gogan. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the new position of COVID RN slash LPM.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Just a shout out to our nurses. They've been working overtime and hard, you know, since COVID hit. And with having all of the kids back in school, those additional responsibilities and normal things on top of COVID is very much a lot to handle. So these are going to be positions that are very much appreciated by them.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of a memorandum of agreement, the Webster Educators Association.
We have met with the union and put together this memorandum of agreement, which really outlines what our COVID safety protocols are for the year. There is one slight error. There is an additional word. The word is test on the bullet above number two. We would just omit that word, test. But this sort of talks about our COVID safety protocols, our face mask protocols, and how we'll deal with quarantining and investigations and the COVID sick bank. So a lot of this is carried over from our memorandum of agreement from last year. And the union has ratified it.
So are there any questions or comments about this memorandum of agreement from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of one additional ABA position at Park Avenue Elementary School.
Mrs. Barris, would you like to speak about this?
Sure. As we've gotten into the school year and the number of students that we are trying to group, as you know, it's very, very challenging every year, depending on how many students per grade level and how many inclusion and substantially separate. So we did, after, you know, doing our magic in terms of making everything work with the number of ABA staff, we found a shortage in one of our substantially separate classrooms. And we're in need of another full-time ABA person to staff that classroom due to a one-on-one student need.
Mrs. Barris, are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the additional ABA position at Park Avenue.
So moved.
Back then.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you pull the committee, please?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, the motion passes unanimously. And the next item on the agenda is the approval of one additional paraprofessional at Webster Middle School.
Mrs. Barris?
So as in the first scenario, we have had additional students added to one of our substantially separate programs at Webster Middle. And we also have like a student whose services needed to be provided by an instructional assistant. So one-to-one instructional assistants. So given all of the students who have moved in and again, trying to look at all of the possibilities for making staffing work within the programs, we determined that we needed one additional one-on-one support person for one of our substantially separate classrooms.
Mrs. Barris, are there any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve one additional paraprofessional at Webster Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is the review and transfer of signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. Does anyone have any questions for Mrs. Perangeli about the warrant? Mrs. Perangeli, do you need us to come in and sign that MOA also?
Yes.
All right.
Ms. Millet, if you could stop in and sign the warrant also.
Well, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back then.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please pull the committee?
Member Blythe?
Yes.
Member Mallett?
Yes.
Member Naprata?
Yes.
Member Adamopolis?
Yes.
And Chair Siddiqui?
Yes, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Have a nice night, everyone.
Thank you.